Good evening everyone, we're calling the October 8, 2024 meeting of the Ontario Board of Ed to Order. We have a tobacco policy in place, there is no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building. Will you please stand for the pledge? Board Clerk, will you please call roll? Trustee Conundson?
Here.
Trustee Jerome?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Here.
Trustee Goodrich?
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo?
Here.
Trustee Bishop?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, on to item two point zero one. May I have a motion to enter into executive session to review the building level safety plans and to discuss the employment of a particular employee? Trustee Ramondo first. Trustee Mitchell Morrell second. All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you.
All right, we are back from executive session. May I have a motion to exit executive session? And trustee Raimondo, second, trustee Mitchell Morale, all in favor? And next is our welcome from middle school principal James Dedana.
Oh, again, welcome everybody. Thank you for joining us at the middle school, high school tonight. It has been a, just a wonderful start of the year, first five weeks. We had a board of ed visit just yesterday, yesterday, yep, which went wonderful. Able to show the board members around the building, some of the improvements, some of the many kids that we have now in the middle school with adding the sixth grade and do want to talk a little bit about that. It's been, I couldn't have asked for a better, couldn't have expected a better opening with the sixth grade now joining us in the middle school. They really have just acclimated perfectly. They are part of the building, they are part of the school, they are part of the everyday. There is no difference, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference if you walked down between the seventh, sixth, seventh or eighth grade and it's really been fantastic. I prepared a little PowerPoint with some pictures if you should have in front of you so you can walk you through this a little bit. So the big concern, of course, with the kids and everybody were the lockers. You know, am I going to get my locker on time? Am I going to get the class on time? I'm going to be late. I got to tell you, within a week, ninety-five percent of the kid, maybe more, were used to the routine, used to getting in and out of their locker, not needing their backpacks, able to get where they needed to go on time. By now, five weeks into the year, I would say that number is at like ninety-nine percent. You always have a few that forget something, drop something, put their lock on backwards. But for the most part, lockers have been wonderful. As we flip through this, you can see there's a lot of support. Teachers are in the hallway constantly, they are out there helping the kids, directing them, helping them with their lockers, helping them stay organized. You know, with the sixth grade, we have the Brain Power Boot Camp, which has been a big hit, really working on those executive functioning skills such as organization, not only with their day-to-day, but with their homework, with making sure they're on their Chromebooks, making sure they get into their portals, see their grades, see their Google classrooms. It's really been a big help this year with the acclimate, acclimate, acclimating, sorry, the sixth grade into the middle school lifestyle. I can't say enough about Mrs. Grimm and Mr. Rushford who are teaching those, that class for the sixth grade. They have really taken those kids under their wings and made them feel very, very comfortable. You can see with all the smiling faces as you get through the PowerPoint, the kids seem happy. It's a really positive atmosphere. You know, we've had very, no problems, knock on wood, so far. They have, they are getting their recess every day, they're enjoying walking the track. We have an area for the kids to play four-square and kick the soccer ball around. We have been able to get everyone into recess through the lunch with absolutely no problem. The kids have plenty of time to eat and plenty of time to get some fresh air in the middle of the day, which scientifically, if you look at the research, is so important to keeping the kids engaged and on track during the day. So I'm really glad that we're able to get all the kids out there and they take advantage of it, especially the outdoor eating area. It's very popular, I would say eighty percent of the kids eat outside. There's plenty of room for them, they clean up after themselves, we have plenty of supervision out there and it's really been a positive, positive part of the day. You can see they eat outside, they eat out up on the hill, they eat out on the picnic tables inside. You know, they really have a lot of space, so it's good to give the kids space at lunch. We're really utilizing the whole campus for the middle school at lunch and out back. So that's really been a positive. They've actually expanded it and they're so well behaved and supervised that it's been, it's been great. It's been absolutely great. As you can see, they all carry around their water bottles, which is a phenomenon that, you know, twenty twenties, that all kids carry around water bottles, stay hydrated. The water fountains work great, they fill up their water bottles, they bring them around with them. You can see them as you turn into the classes, they bring them out. There's, next picture is Ms. Brock with her sixth grade class. You can see the water bottles, the new furniture that was, was bought for the sixth grade classrooms, working out fantastically. They're able to go from individuals' desks to group desks, a lot of group work. I've been able to get into all the classrooms over the last couple of weeks and start my observations and just see a lot of great things going. We've got a great bunch of sixth grade teachers that have just come up here and really taken to the whole middle school academics, you know, really grouping, working with the seventh and eighth grade teachers have made them feel welcome. You know, we had progress reports due today, able to get all those out on time. You know, it's a new system for them to use, but I got to say, everybody has pitched in, the entire faculty has made the sixth grade feel welcome. You know, and the kids are happy, which is the most important. They're happy and they're learning. I haven't seen their progress reports, I haven't read through all of them yet, but I am hearing great things and, you know, we're able to give them the support they need with the reading teachers, with AIS that we have for six, seven and eight. So we're getting the kids what they need academically as well as emotionally. So it's been a really nice start to the year. I really couldn't be happier with how it's gone this year, I really couldn't. As we move along, you know, the kids are really, you know, they get along with one another. I mean, the sixth and seventh are coming up together, so they really had all last year together, but even with the eighth grade, they are kind of separated into this front hall, their lockers, so separated in a sense, but together at lunch and together at, you know, moving in the hallways, using the restrooms. You know, another great thing is that we were able to separate the restrooms, as we said, so that we have dedicated middle school bathrooms and high school bathrooms. And that's really been another positive aspect of the, of the transition. But, you know, again, I can't say enough, looking forward to the dance at the end of the month. Everyone will be invited, six, seven and eight. Booster Club is helping out with that. Our National Junior Honor Society and our student government are running the dance. So, you know, it's really everybody coming together and that's kind of what we hoped for. There's no division at all, the faculty works great together, they help one another and, you know, I think that's an attribute, you know, you can attribute to that just to the Auntie or community, you know. As a relatively new person, you know, it's something that I've felt since I've come here is that everybody kind of pulls together, you know, for the good of the kids and it's really a great thing to be part of.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions? Yes?
Is recess over after sixth grade? Just curious.
Recession for the middle school is during fifth period lunch.
What grade does it go through? Sorry.
No, six, seven and eight in the middle school. I mean, they even, I'll let Lance comment on this, but even the high school kids are out there having recess, playing four-square and, you know, throwing the ball around and walking the track. So, you know, it's, it's, I don't know if that's attributed to anything other than kids like to be outside, you know, the fresh air, it just, it does wonders for you. But six, seven and eight all get recess. And intramurals for sixth grade is starting tomorrow, so we're excited about that, too.
That sounds exciting. Any other questions, trustees? Trustee Goodrich?
So when we had the tour, we heard a lot of good things about the cell phone change. If you want to go over that a little bit so everybody can hear it, that'd be great.
Yeah, so, you know, the middle school, prior to me, had, you know, had a ban on cell phones for middle school in general. They were expected to keep them out of sight. So we stepped it up a little bit this year and we had them put them in their lockers. And honestly, I think one kid, the first week of school, had it in their pocket only because they forgot, but since then, I haven't seen a cell phone, teachers haven't even seen it in their pockets, sticking it out their back pockets or, or anywhere. They actually went on a field trip to, eighth grade went on a field trip to Frost Valley this week, or last week, I'm sorry, and they left their cell phones back at the, at the school, left them in the locker for the day. So that was really another positive things. And, and you know, you just see better engagement. So far, knock on wood, we're seeing less, you know, fighting or, or, you know, social angst among the kids, you know, you don't see the social networks, you know, influencing the kids during the day. So again, another really positive thing. And a lot of that has to do with a lot of the staff. It has to do with social workers, psychologists, guidance counselors, everybody working together to, you know, to be here for the kids and that's, that's really the great thing about Auntie Ora.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you so much, Mr. Dedana.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, the board will hereby accept the minutes of the September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four and the September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four meetings. May I have a first? Trustee Knudsen, second. Trustee Jerome will switch to roll call voting. Trustee Knudsen?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morale?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. We have another presentation at this point. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction Stephanie Laffin will present on the upcoming proposed changes in graduation requirements.
Good evening, everyone. In my presentation tonight, I'm going to share some information about the New York State Education Department's proposed changes that they're going to present to the Board of Regents in November. And as we think about regionalization and presenting the best educational experience for our students and perhaps potential budget constraints, it's really important to keep these proposed changes in mind, so it's something we wanted to share with you now. So as progressive as the New York State Education Department is in many areas, you may be surprised to hear about a few things that happened in nineteen oh six. President Theodore Roosevelt designated Devil's Tower in Wyoming as the first national monument in the United States. William Kellogg invented cornflakes. Louis Nixon invented a sonar-like device and Lee DeForest invented an electronic amplifying tube, both which were important in the advent of the radio and television. And New York State created our current graduation model. Regents exams, in fact, as a high school end-of-course exam began in eighteen seventy-eight. So our graduation model and the way that we do things in, in education in New York have been around a very long time. So I guess the question becomes why change? And according to the New York State Education Department, the changes, the proposed changes are really driven by state ed's desire for the most, the most equitable education possible and our obligation to make sure that all students gain the knowledge and skill they need to be successful in the future regardless of zip code or region of the state. And this came about with the process they went about was creating the New York State Blue Ribbon Commission. In early twenty nineteen, Chancellor Rosa committed to really rethinking New York's graduation requirements. A few months later, the Board of Regents announced it would create a Blue Ribbon Commission on graduation measures. And to help inform the work of the commission, the Board of Regents and the State Ed Department began holding regional meetings across the state to gather input from many stakeholders, including parents, educators, administrators, school support staff, representatives of higher education, the business community, students and the general public. And as a result of these meetings, the following changes will be part of a plan presented to the Board of Regents by the State Ed Department in November. In addition, the state standards will shift, our assessments will shift to support the new portrait of a graduate based on the upcoming timeline. So the first really important transformation change that is being suggested is the adoption of the New York State Portrait of a Graduate. And if you take a look at the next slide, it really breaks it down a bit. The New York State diploma is a, is our baseline and it is how we as a state define success for P twelve education. This commission considered the skills, the knowledge, the mindsets needed for future success in college, careers and as citizens. Proficiency in these skills can be demonstrated in multiple ways that allow students to show what they know and what they have learned. Ideally, this will allow teachers more flexibility for interdisciplinary work and project-based learning that engages all learners. So next you see the portrait of a graduate and this chart represents each component of the proposed portrait. We have an innovative problem solver, students who are literate across the content areas, who have cultural competence, social emotional competence, are effective communicators, global citizens and critical thinkers. And the idea is that all students would demonstrate proficiency in each component of the portrait of a graduate in order to earn a high school diploma. But what is unique in the proposal is students will have a choice in the ways that they demonstrate proficiency. An additional change proposed is the redefining of credits. The specifics aren't clear yet, but hopefully in November we'll get a bit more detail. But right now, they've shared that they want to organize our diploma requirements by the components of the portrait of a graduate. So credits would be, requirements would be defined as a complement to that portrait. There will be new requirements for career in tech education as well as a requirement for financial literacy. And again, focus on a variety of ways for students to show evidence of proficiency in the learning standards and the components of the portrait of a graduate. Demonstrating proficiency will come with a variety of combinations in these areas as you see on the slide, expanding learning experiences. Students can provide evidence of their proficiency in the learning standards and the components of the portrait of a graduate in a variety of ways. So it isn't necessity that students would choose all of these measures, but there would be some complement of these measures. In addition to courses, credentials or seals, work-based experiences, capstone learning experiences, PTEC, CTE programs, participation in the arts and passing approved assessments. For example, a portrait component of being an effective communicator, as you see on the next slide, there's multiple means for demonstrating student proficiency. So if the, if what we would like to allow students to demonstrate is that they are effective communicators, the student on the left might demonstrate that by earning the seal of biliteracy. They could also successfully complete a locally developed capstone project and successfully complete an English composition course. So those three things might work together to provide evidence that they are proficient in that component. However, the student on the right perhaps could prove that proficiency in a different way, perhaps successfully completing digital media communications career in tech program, passing the state exam in ELA and completing a summer internship for the community newspaper. All of those ways, both students would have demonstrated their proficiency, but they would have done it in different ways. The third proposed change is to sunset diploma assessment requirements. So students would no longer need to pass the Regents or have a plus-one pathway assessment to graduate. It needs to be kept in mind, however, state assessments will continue to be administered per federal ESSA requirements. It's not that New York State has the option of getting rid of state assessments, that can't happen if we want federal funding and we definitely want and need federal funding. So the requirements for ESSA would definitely be adhered to. But as we think of it now that students cannot graduate without a very specific set of Regents exams, that in the proposal would not be the only means. set of Regents exams, that in the proposal would not be the only means to graduate. The fourth proposed change is to move to one diploma. So currently now, there are a variety of diplomas. You could get your advanced Regents diploma, and the local diploma and the advanced Regents diplomas will sunset. Instead, a student could earn an advanced designation, or a seal, or an endorsement. Any additional local requirements will not be able to prevent a student from graduating. There will also be some additional recommendations made to the Board of Regents, and this may allow for some changes in teacher certification requirements. As you may know, teacher recruitment can be challenging, particularly in certain content areas such as science. And there's a discussion of a STEM certification, perhaps, instead of a specific separate biology than earth science and physics. Teachers need all separate certifications to teach these classes, so there's a discussion of perhaps combining them in some way. The next slide really has the current model and the proposed transformational model right beside each other. But I think you can see the similarities and differences here, but one thing, one way I think it's interesting to think about these two models, it's kind of like graduating from college now. So let's say students would like to obtain a bachelor's degree. And as we know, different majors have various requirements, content and experiences, but all majors result in a bachelor's degree. The path for individual majors vary, but all end in a bachelor's degree. And I think the, the new proposed model, it's more about choice and allowing students to take different paths, ending up in the same place. So again, there's four proposed transformations. That's adopting the New York State Portrait of a Graduate, redefining credits, and expanding learning experiences, sunsetting diploma assessment requirements, and moving to one diploma. It's important to, to realize this is not a light switch situation. In other words, it's not going to, everything's not going to change in one year, it's over, we move straight to another model. Certain things will turn on and others will turn off based upon an upcoming timeline that has not been shared with us yet. Another opportunity that's been part of this process are these Blue Ridge Commission Ambassador forums, and they've been occurring starting in June of this year, and they're going through the end of this month. And this is an opportunity for local input and for local districts and students and parents and community members to discuss the resources that might be needed to implement this new model. So as you know, and as our audience may or may not know, there is a forum this week, on Thursday, at Ulster Boces in New Paltz, from five to seven, and there is a registration link, it's there embedded in the presentation, that you can click on and register, or you can send an email, as is in the slide. So this is an opportunity to contribute to this conversation, to hear more about it. I'll be attending, I think several of us will be attending, I believe, and maybe even some board members will be attending. So it's an opportunity to think a little bit more about this together. But specifically, I think it's important for us not to think so much as to whether or not these recommendations will be made. It appears by all means they will be made, they will have to be voted upon by the Board of Regents, and that won't happen until perhaps March. But really, this is an opportunity to think about the resources that districts would need to bring this model to life. So I think it's important for us at this point to think in that manner. So as you see on that last what's next slide, it just goes over when these meetings started, as they're going on, and you see finalizing with the full plan presented to the Board of Regents, with a rollout plan, with a timeline, which should be part of that presentation in November. Does anybody have any questions?
Trustee Ramondo?
Can you explain what a capstone project is?
A capstone project is, think of it kind of as a culminating project. It would be an opportunity for students to develop, perhaps even over a series of years, multiple projects and requirements that would be developed at the local level, where they're able to demonstrate their knowledge in a final way, probably with a presentation, something that's publicly shared.
Trustee Knudsen?
Yes, I was just wondering, with these six, with the portrait of a graduate, is the expectation that to get a diploma, you'd display proficiency in all six of these areas?
That is my understanding, yes.
Okay. And it seems like some of these areas would cover multiple disciplines possibly, like critical thinker, it could be math, could be science, could be, you know, a bunch of different. Will there still be, will local districts still be able to set sort of core subjects that we say you have to be proficient in this, within these categories? Or is it the idea that it's completely flexible within these categories?
We don't really know yet. I'm sure they'll give as much local flexibility as possible, but, you know, there will still be requirements, I would assume, of certain math classes, science. But the idea in this new model is to give room for these classes maybe not to be necessarily completely independent, but for some project-based learning that allows them to work together, for students to demonstrate proficiency in perhaps math, science, and communication in a project-based way. That is my understanding, based on, you know, the discussion from state ed so far. What ends up in the very final version, we're going to have to wait and see.
Trustee Jerome?
So I can appreciate this is basically moving away from one-size-fits-all model, an old model. And I can see that some things look more, are simplified, and then, on the other hand, it looks quite complex. And I'm just wondering about how the student body is going to navigate all of these options and freedoms and decisions. It's great, but are they gonna, are the school counselors going to be there to guide? I mean, who is going to help you figure out what you're doing, who you can connect with, you know, where you could do an internship because you like, do you like math? Oh, are you, okay, well, we'll, you know, those types of things. It's very complex. Whereas in our previous system, you know, you just, you knew what you were up for, right? So I guess, do we know anything about like how they intend to help guide people through these decisions?
Well, my guess is that the way that a district chooses to support students through this process would be very much up to the individual district. Again, I think that's why we're having these statewide conversations about how we use resources regionally. We know that different districts are resourced differently, and our access to other resources, community resources, vary across the state. So I think that's why this conversation is timely at this point. They're very tied as to how resources could be shared on a micro level as to Antioora High School. I'm sure that school counselors will play a huge role in this, as they always have, in working with students individually. When we, when we learn where we're going, when we learn exactly what we're going, where we're going to need to go as educators, that is when we can really work together and develop a plan on how we get students there. But I'm sure it's going to be as personalized and individualized as possible, and to your point, less one-size-fits-all. And that's going to have different demands than the current system does. So it'll be a process of working together and collaborating and trying and getting better, and trying again and getting better, and getting input from everyone, working really closely with students, and that, you know, the process we always, iterative process we always use to be the best we can at what we do.
Trustee Ramondo?
I will just speak to, having gone on many college visits in the spring, that this model and a student really-driven approach of making choices and playing an active part in their education is very much what I witnessed at the college level, where kids really have a choice, they have flexibility, they can make their own majors and minors. And I think by starting off here at this point with them, you know, in high school, sets them up for success in being, you know, self-starters and critical thinkers and able to make some decisions independently on their own that make them happy, which would be really, really great, because it keeps them motivated throughout the rest of their life and their career that they choose down the line.
Trustee Lynch?
Thank you very much, Ms. Laffin. I was, really appreciate also the historical context, because I think when the presentation that we had at the Royal School Board, they also talked about what, that some, these seven attributes were also somewhat determined by the fact that this is the skill sets that we need in the 21st century, right? And that with AI and other things, potentially, you know, as you were suggesting in terms of thinking about, you know, what, what will be most important in terms of your, you know, your times tables and how, or being a critical thinker, right? And so as we start to evolve as a society, I think it's important that we think about the needs for 21st century high school graduates in the same way. My question is just, and, we're just curious, in terms of this Boces meeting on Thursday, the 10th, what questions are you bringing to that, or is it really a listening session? I'm curious if the administration has a point of view, or a question, or concern, or something that they want to, you know, sort of understand better, based on some of the limited knowledge we have about timeline. I can imagine you have many questions, but just curious if there's a specific piece of this that, that you're exploring.
So I had an opportunity when we were at the Niskus concert, conference, to, you know, have several small group sessions with state ed specifically. So that access, we were really allowed, had the opportunity to ask some direct questions in that setting. But I think the conversation, I'm interested in the continued conversation around resourcing. And what, because, you know, resourcing at the state level, it's not just about Antioora thinking about how they're going to resource, it's state ed thinking about their request and budget as well for this resourcing and how that changes. So it is a larger conversation, and, you know, it's as many specifics as we can be given, as early as we can get them, so, but I really, I don't anticipate them answering many questions. I, I anticipate them listening to things that, some things, questions that are asked. So for me, it's about waiting on a timeline, and, you know, just listening, it's always interesting to hear different people's point of view.
From my perspective, I think I'm interested in, in hearing more about the rollout and what their timelines are, but I'm also really interested in figuring out how they're tying this and the regionalization initiative together. It seems very tied, but they are sort of keeping it separate and running them on parallel tracks. So I'm just looking forward to getting more information on both of those and seeing where the connections are going to be made.
Other questions? All right, more to come. Thank you so much for your presentation. On to superintendent district news.
Well, good evening. I wanted to, I was actually going to share more about the Blue Ribbon Commission Ambassador Program on Thursday night at Ulster Boces. And the way that this is being presented is to say that the program will include an overview of State Education Department's proposed vision for implementing the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission, and as an opportunity to provide feedback on the four proposed transformations, and to identify the opportunities and challenges related to those transformations. So I would just reiterate, this is a great opportunity for our community to come out and learn a little more, and get more information, and provide feedback. So as Assistant Superintendent Laffin provided, the registration information is right in her presentation, and you can register a couple of different ways. So in terms of the regionalization initiative, we have begun to complete the Needs and Resources Assessment Tool that is being required by the State Education Department. And then I will also be attending a meeting on Friday at Putnam Northern Westchester Boces that has been designed for superintendents, just to learn more about this initiative. I, I really have very little information about what will be shared, but I'm really interested to attend with my colleagues and see what, what the state is going to offer us in terms of information. I wanted to mention that we did receive the official decision from Commissioner Rosa regarding the appeal that was filed with respect to the closure of the Fenicia Elementary School, and the commissioner has affirmed the action of the Board of Education and has dismissed that appeal. I'm happy to say, at our last meeting, we were looking forward to homecoming, and now we can say that homecoming was another incredibly well-attended and successful event this year. And although I can't possibly thank everyone who contributed to the success of this event, I do want to especially thank John O'Donnell and Leah Smith in our athletic department, our administrative team, certainly all of the coaches and club advisors, as well as the booster club, for all of the hard work and support they provided to make the day special for all of our students. And I also separately want to mention the entire Buildings and Grounds Department for a special thank you. They absolutely were running around, making sure everyone had everything they needed for all of the games, making sure that all of the booths had the appropriate power and extension cords, and just helping to ensure that the day was running really smoothly. This event is a massive undertaking, and it really is a wonderful opportunity for all of our students to come out and shine and show their enthusiasm for their school and for the community to engage with us. And I was fortunate to be able to share the booth with our board trustees and meet community members and give free popcorn to those who stopped by to chat with us. I know I had mentioned that I was hoping to share the space utilization study at tonight's meeting. Unfortunately, we are not quite there yet. The architects have provided us with a proposal of space required for the Central Elementary School, and they are finalizing their thoughts on the middle high school. But we now need to go through and review it from a programmatic perspective. So this afternoon, we met with both elementary principals and Assistant Superintendent Laffin and Assistant Superintendent Allison to start reviewing the elementary needs, because obviously classroom requirements are going to be driven by the programmatic needs. So while architects can do an analysis on the number of students we have and the classrooms that we have right now, but they can't really design the program needs, that's really on us. So we're going through and reviewing that together. And then I believe the architects, although they already did their draft of the middle high school, they're coming back to the building and going to walk around and review with the principals how each of the classrooms are currently being utilized, so that we can really make sure that it's not just a, this many classrooms. It's designed for what we will need. So we will share that as soon as we can. Last week, we had our first meeting as a team with Sharon Lipowski and our architects together to establish kind of a tentative plan and timeline for the year. We are anticipating hosting three community forums this year. So we have tentatively targeted the forums to be during the first week of December, the second one to be during the week of January 13th, and the third during the week of February 24th. We have not pinpointed the exact day of the week that we'll be meeting, but we will absolutely share more as we finalize the dates and start providing communication to the community. the dates and start providing communication to the community around those meetings. Anyone who has a child in the middle or high school might have seen in their email today that the quarter one progress reports are now available through the Student and Parent Portal, and they are to be found under the Documents tab. And lastly, I just wanted to note, School Board Recognition Week is going to be October 14th through 18th. And not that anyone is unaware of this, but school board members take on one of the most important responsibilities, that is overseeing the education of every community's youth. Boards of education guide their local school systems and ensure that public schools are flexible and responsive to the needs of the community. School boards are comprised of volunteers who do not receive any compensation for their services. They are individuals within the community who dedicate their time to improving public education. School board members statewide collectively oversee nearly two and a quarter million students and $86.3 billion in budgeted spending, which is pretty awesome. There are, there are currently over 5,000 board seats in New York, and interestingly, 49.2 are held by male board members and 50.8 by female board members. And about two-thirds of board members spend six hours or more per week on board activities. This is truly a commitment to the community and a service. And on behalf of the district, I would like to thank our board for all they do to support our students.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaren. Does anyone have questions for the superintendent? All right, on to Board District News. Any trustees have news? All right. Well, I just wanted to also just state how fabulous homecoming was. It was so great to, to, to see all the students running around and the athletes and just, and really, parents, community members, and the parents that were supporting all the booths, that the different sports and teams and clubs had. It was really terrific. What else do I have here? Wanted to just note that our New York State School Board Association Business Meeting is Thursday night, and Trustee Knutson is going to be representing our Board of Ed, voting on the resolutions that we met last Monday to vote on, and he'll be representing us. And that'll be great. We really appreciate that because it's a, it can be a long and tedious meeting, and he's ready for it. And I just also wanted to, to say, because this is our last meeting before the election, and we have a presidential election coming up on November 5th. And we hope that everyone will take advantage of their constitutional right to vote, especially our new voters in the district, our seniors who have registered over this past several months. And we wish everyone good luck with that. And we will move on. Do any other trustees have anything to say? Trustee Goodrich?
As already mentioned there, we had a great tour, it was yesterday, of the Minnesota High School. And pretty much we had all the board members there. And as always, I am totally amazed of all the upgrades every year. It truly is amazing.
Anybody else? Okay. On to our student representative, Olivia McHugh will give us a report. Thank you.
Hello. So homecoming was a success. Students were able to support our sports teams on Friday, as well as enjoy the tailgate sponsored by the Booster Club. On Saturday, students volunteered and supported various fundraising booths and came to watch additional games. Following homecoming day festivities, students returned back to school for the homecoming dance. We thank all the chaperones that made the homecoming dance possible. Additionally, today, students received their student ID cards, and that is all.
Thank you very much. Anybody have questions or comments for Olivia? Trustee Lynch?
Welcome, Olivia, and thank you for your report. Maybe a question for the superintendent, but just curious if you could give us background on the ID cards? Is that a new initiative or something that's preexisted?
We've had ID cards, but we're, we're moving towards having everybody wear them, but we're not there yet.
All right. Any other questions for Olivia? Okay, we will move on. Thank you, Olivia. And please don't feel like you have to stay for the whole meeting. Stay as long as you want, though. On to item 9.01, appointments. The Board of Education hereby approves the updated appointments of district officers. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second? Trustee Knutson, thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, we'll vote. Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's unanimous. Do we have anyone signed up to speak tonight? Okay, we do not. No, no public be heard speakers tonight. On to item 12.01, the board will continue our discussion on the creation of our 2024-25 board goals.
I just, or maybe you're going to say this, but we're just trying to kind of narrow down what we've all combined, correct?
Yes. So just so everyone understands what we, last, last time we met, two weeks ago, we kind of read aloud for, for each other and for the community, the draft goals that we were thinking about at the time. And after that meeting, our board clerk, Amanda Gates, developed a Google Doc, and we've all been kind of working in the Google Doc to either fine tune what we had originally written, or add new goals, or, or different goals. So I don't know if somebody would like to start or have suggestions about how to proceed. I know that many of the goals are pretty closely related, yeah, and overlapping. I know Trustee Knutson found a format that he liked and kind of plugged some stuff in. So would you like to?
Talk about that.
Thank you.
So I, I think I commented at the last meeting that when I read last year's board goal, it sounded to me a little bit more like a mission statement, a sort of a broad mission statement rather than a sort of, you know, there's, there's sort of different kinds of categories of the way you can make goals. You can make them sort of, you know, with a measurable metric, you know, I, you, I, we say we're going to do this, did we do it or not at the end of the year? And so I, I was, since I'm new to this, I just scoured around on some other districts in the area. And I found, I sent around a copy this afternoon of a, of a, of a sample document from another district that just sort of broke it out into an overall mission statement, district goals, and then board goals. And by the time you got down to board goals, it was very sort of nuts and bolts. And there was a mission statement that was very broad. And then, so it sort of went down from the most broad was the mission statement, then slightly less broad was the district goals, and then the, the board goals were very sort of nuts and bolts, like we're going to, we're going to do things that we can measure, you know? And I, to me, I, I sort of read these things imagining myself in the perspective of a parent who was coming into the district or was, you know, trying to gauge, you know, is this board running well? And to me, the specificity of that document would, made me think that it would inspire confidence as opposed to, you know, having things be more overarching and vague. So that's why, so I submitted something to Google Doc that was pretty lengthy. I sort of adopted that template. And, and a lot of the actual nuts and bolts, when I got down to nuts and bolts, was from other trustees' goals that they had submitted. So just, I guess I'm just raising the question of, do we want something that's more concise and broad and, and more mission statement-like? Or do we want to get down to kind of nuts and bolts goals?
Trustee Jerome?
Thank you, Trustee Knutson. For me, as I read these, it's very clear, the goals that are set forth, I think that it would be helpful. They're in plain language, they are under headings, which I can immediately identify. And, you know, they, they, I really, I really like the way that this is laid out. I just want to throw in my support there.
I, I agree. I like the, the way that it's laid out very much. And I, and I, I understand that you, I, when I read it, I, I could see that you incorporated the goals that we discussed last week, you know, many of the goals that, that we had crafted were incorporated in it.
Yes, it was really, this draft that I put in is really more intended as sort of a, you know, it could work this way. I didn't spend a ton of time on, you know, trying to perfectly word every goal. It was just sort of like, if we plugged in the various topics that we're contending with, that we want to make progress on this year, I just think there's so many areas that it might, it's might behoove us to, to just break them out a little bit and...
I have a question. You said that the, the mission statement was at the top. Is this, is this the mission statement from the other district that, or did you rewrite a mission statement?
Their, their mission statement was shorter, more succinct than this. Yeah, I, I was just riffing here a little bit. I was, I was trying to think of my own, I was trying to contribute what my own view, I, that's what I sort of understood the assignment to be. But, you know, and so there's, you can, I sent the, I sent the document as an attachment today, if you had a chance to look at it. You know, theirs is basically a sentence that's more of a, almost like a motto or something, like every, every teacher is a source of knowledge, every leader is a, you know, every, you know, I forget the, the actual wording that they used. So I didn't do, I guess you would say that my first part here is, is a combination of sort of, of mission statement and, and district goals. And then when you get down to board, where it says board goals with a subheading, that's for, for us.
I recall looking at the, the example that you posted as an attachment, which was from that specific school district. And, and it did have their, their mission statement, and then the board goals, and then, I mean, the, the district goals, and then the board goals were underneath. And so do you think that the, the board goals that were underneath is, is the way that, that that district is sort of monitoring progress?
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the way they're worded, they're all worded, "We will do X." "We will do Y." And that's a very, from the perspective of a reader, it's very easy to understand, like, and then it's very easy to, "Well, you said you would do that. How successful were you in, in doing that?"
Right. I just want to say that creating a board or a district mission is a, is a real process. And it's something that, for, so for, I believe for this, for this project of developing our district goals, we would probably be best suited to use our, our current mission statement or, you know, vision statement. And then at some future time, if we wanted to, you know, revise those statements, that we would work on that as another project, but not at the same time.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah. Other trustees? Comments? Okay, I want to just take a few minutes to read this again, because I read it a few days ago, and I haven't really read it since. Trustee Lynch, were you raising your hand? Okay, okay. No, no, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, just, just want to take a second to read. I'm wondering if, if other trustees, you know, like this format, you know, what, I, I don't want to belabor it if that's, if, if there are only three of us who, who think it's a good format, and then kind of work on the wording and, and all of that, because that's the part that seems to take a long time. Trustee Ramondo?
I like the format.
Thank you. She likes the format. Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
I believe in our previous goal, we didn't get so specific. So I'm just wondering, I don't know, like, for example, the DEI thing, like, we made it a policy. Is that not enough? Do we also need to make it a goal? Like, I don't know, it just seems almost repetitive to me. Like, why would we make it a policy? I mean, a goal, if it, we just made it a policy, or there was, or, you know, or the long-term communication. I don't know, I think some of it gets a little too, unless it's what we're going for, or something can get too specific. It's like, then we're not naming other things we want to do, you know? So maybe my idea of a goal was a more general thing. I, and last year's was.
Yeah, it was. Trustee Jerome?
I would say that organizationally, this pulls out those policies and puts them front and center as topics that are of great import to our district. It also has this great effect of when you're saying, "We care about all these things." So I'm talking about for that person who may not attend every board meeting, or may not be familiar, intimately familiar with our policy, or a new parent who's contemplating moving, they, this is, this is someplace where they can quickly look and say, "Oh, they're on top of all of these things. Great." And it's, it's, it's less of that mission, vision-y kind of feel. I appreciate that for something, for items that are goals, I guess, so.
Trustee Knutson?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that I, my submission was really intended as a form exercise primarily, and I kind of threw all the spaghetti at the wall. And it may be that the board decides that that's too much spaghetti and we need to focus in on... focus in on a subset of those things. Or, you know, like, that, from a communications perspective, really identify top three priorities or something. But, but I, I just, I think the more expansive, a little more of an expansive form just is a better communications tool. That's, that's my main point.
Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, thank you. I, I really am, I just think it's wonderful to see the robust response from all the trustees. I also, I, I really do like this, this format. I just wonder if it's what we need for this exercise. My point is, for example, like, I think, I love the idea of going to the board page on our website and having the mission up top and the vision up top. And, you know, and potentially what I love about this actually reminded me of maybe even like the goals of each committee that we're sitting on, for example, where some of this could live. But I, I would love to, to think about our goals as being, district goals as being really sort of timely and use sort of that SMART framework, which helps us have accountability for new work and really helps us drive our priorities. And in that regard, I actually liked what trustee Goodrich did, which was to also sort of focus us on this voter authorization that is imminent and what is required around that this year, which feels very specific to me. And not that actually a lot of the other things couldn't fall under trustee Goodrich's broader goal, but I, I just liked how that focused us in a way that feels timely and urgent and necessary. Again, not to negate all of this good work. I just wonder if it's, if it, if we could reuse it for a different purpose, which is, I hear you, you know, about obviously attracting our, all of our stakeholders to our work, helping them understand the bigger picture and our role and what we're up to and this, you know, this importance around the committee work that we do. But I just want to make sure that it doesn't dilute our priorities.
Trustee Jerome?
It's funny, I mean, I think trustee Goodrich's statements are so important and belong somewhere, but I tend to think that it, they're, it's too focused on one thing. For me to be, what I liked is that the breakout of topics, you know, showed, showed our movement on all of these fronts, whereas this, I had a similar problem with what we came up last, last year, which is just focused so much on this one issue and we are so much more than that one issue. So just a different viewpoint. Trustee Lynch?
Trustee Goodrich?
I like what everybody said here. I mean, I like trustee Knudsen's outline. I thought that was really good. I mean, a lot of the trustees said, you know, fiscally responsible and financial statements. And, and yes, mine was very specific. The reason I was being very specific is because obviously, that's one of our key goals that we have this year. I mean, last year, we had the long-term plan as a goal. And this year, we have one or more propositions that we're going to have to communicate to the voters and ask them to vote on. So I just want to make sure, we have a goal to, to do the best we can to communicate to them why this is a good idea. So that's why I put that, that here. That wasn't to be the only goal, by the way.
Could you repeat your last statement? I didn't hear that. It wasn't some...
It wasn't to be the only goal. We have, you know, I, I read through the other things, the other goals that other people presented before I put mine in there. But I would like to be specific on this one because it's such a key part of what we want to do this year.
Yeah, that, that is a true statement. So how shall we proceed? Superintendent, do you have any, any input for us?
Well, I think I had shared in a previous meeting that I feel like my focus this year will be on the proposition that's going to be on the vote in May, moving forward with the communications plan and moving forward with the DEI and belonging resolution. In my head, those are the three things that, working with the board over the past couple of years, have really bubbled up to be the highest priority for me and my team. So I would love if, if we were in line as a management team on those things. I don't, I don't necessarily have a, a preference for the format. I mean, I think trustee Knudsen's format is, it makes sense. It's a logical format. I like that. I think we do have, we have our mission and vision statement that could be superimposed on here. This has more topics than those three, but some of them really sort of are more just that the board will support. And, you know, in terms of the financial goal that is drafted here, it refers to crafting a, a really fiscally responsible budget for next year, which I would assume that we would aim to do. That's kind of a, it's an assumed goal, that absolutely, and it, it doesn't hurt anybody to articulate that. So, I'm sorry, that's not particularly helpful. But those are, you know, those are the things that are top of mind for, for me and my work this year.
Thank you. Trustee Knudsen, and then trustee Ramondo?
So maybe just as an idea, if those three areas that you just spelled out were in the district goals and then the board goals, this is just an idea, that the board goals could be a few more specific areas of accountability for us to support, support the district goals in sort of, you know, ways that the community can understand what we're trying to do.
I will say that what I wrote was to support superintendent McLaren's three main areas. So that's where I was coming from when I wrote these, just so everyone's clear on that.
Trustee Jerome, and then trustee Lynch?
I guess I just want to again emphasize that while I know there's three areas, the delivery of the information to the public at large, to simplify it, to make it accessible, to make it immediate, to break it out in very simple categories and very brief statements, it is something that we take for granted because we live and breathe it every week. But I would just again stress that for the people at large, to be able to see at a glance in all those different categories, what our priorities and what our concerns are, is a very helpful, valuable thing that we could offer them.
Thank you. Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, and I agree not to be repetitive, but I just wonder, I would also like maybe under new business, we could talk about that, but like, let's, let's redo the board web page, you know, and we can rewrite some of that, because it's, that's, that's within, you know, in terms of, as you're saying, what are, what are our ongoing roles, responsibilities, the budget, the other things? Like, I think, I would love to think through that. But also, going back to trustee Mitchell Morrell's question, in an effort to just get us to pare down a few things, I'm just thinking also about typically trustee Knudsen, it's like, our board goals come first and then the superintendent's plans sort of come under them in a much, sort of an actionable plan that they, that they can take forward. So if, if we already sort of know what those priorities are for you, I would actually suggest then that we have done our bit around setting a policy around DEI. Our goal, you know, could be something else then because we know that it's being taken forward, but it, but it should be sort of at the, at that larger level around policy and around providing the resources and around anything else related to that, yeah? And so I just thought it would be helpful to maybe think about it in those terms, given that we know the priorities of the superintendent and, and thinking then in terms of the latter. I like what you wrote, trustee Ramondo, and I appreciate that framing as you just offered it. I think, I'm losing my train, sorry, the, the one that I was just going to ask about, yeah, is like, is the, the fourth one, and I just wondered if you could say more about it because I didn't know if it was getting at something more specific or if it's really reiterating our duty as the, in terms of our financial responsibilities.
I think it's definitely number one, our financial responsibilities, and then also supporting the long-term plan and knowing that we're making decisions coming up to whatever the ultimate ending is for it. It wasn't anything trying to force something in one way or the other. It's just making sure that we're accountable as we move forward through this process.
Do we want to read things aloud? I mean, I, I feel like we're having this conversation and I don't know if folks that are listening at home or are listening here in the audience have a copy of our draft goals in front of them. Amanda, is this posted? And it's, it's in board docs, right? But, okay, okay. Trustee Goodrich?
As was previously said, I mean, there's a lot of good stuff here that was written by multiple people with a lot of overlap, and some of these words were great. I mean, trustee Ramondo's number four statement, I, I loved that. You know, it was very well crafted. So I guess if we can come through this and maybe, you know, pick the best of the best and merge it together somehow, I don't know.
Is there any part of trustee Ramondo's goals that we don't like or that don't resonate for us? Trustee Jerome?
I don't, I'm not going to speak to that right now, but what I'm thinking is, so we've had this first round, right? Where we've all put them in. I think that it's a pretty heavy lift to go right into, I know you're, I know that you want to get this done, but I think that there's too much here for me to do at a table, this table tonight, and I think I need another round, however that looks, whether that's through email, to be, to hear the discussion that we've had and then to somehow create something for submission. I think it needs a round two, is what I'm saying, before we go to final. That's just my opinion. And I know that you do have time requirements.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the, the thing that's on my mind is that it's October, the school, you know, like, we're, it's already at the five-week mark because progress reports are, are available. And, and, you know, and we understand the superintendent's been working already since, I mean, since last year on these goals, on the goals that she feels are her priorities. So, you know, I think that it's really important for our, our, our goals to also somehow, you know, not necessarily match her priorities, but include her priorities. Or somehow, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying that we have to use her words in our, in our goals. But it's just, that's just some, something that I feel strongly about. Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Is it possible, I don't know if this is illegal or something, but to like, kind of try to do this over email and then approve it, like, in an emergency meeting in like, a week or something, like, or even just, not even necessarily all of us, but a quorum where we're like, cutting and pasting and making it more and then getting it down, whittling it down, and then doing just a quick vote somewhere?
I think that it's, it's legal for us to continue using the Google Doc and continue crafting goals. And, you know, then, I don't know if we want to have a separate goal meeting, a special goal meeting in a couple of weeks, you know, later in October or early November. I'm curious how other trustees feel about that.
Or even a, a committee meeting that three people are on and then like, the rest of us could come for another half an hour. Like, maybe not make it a huge deal, but something easy we could squeeze in before mid-November.
How are other trustees feeling about that? Trustee Goodrich?
So, just to build on what Emily Mitchell Morrell said, so would it be possible to have three people in a committee be given the task to try to merge all this? Does that make sense? And then we...
So develop a, an ad hoc committee to develop our goals?
Well, to merge these goals, because, I mean, you asked before, you know, did anybody have a disagreement with what trustee Ramondo said? And I, I love all four of things she said. Matter of fact, I, I haven't seen anything bad here written. I, I don't know how the superintendent feels, but I don't know, I don't think there's any surprises from the superintendent's point of view.
I don't know if an ad hoc committee is a good idea. I feel like we all need to be at the table. Trustee Jerome?
You know, I agree that there's, there's so much good stuff here. I feel like all of it does, or not all of it, most of it does support the superintendent's goals. So it's, it's a matter of how we want to organize it, the wordsmithing that we want to do. As I say, I'm a big advocate of losing the numbers and going with the headings. But again, I'm looking at what Megan put eloquently and put thought into, but thinking of it in the context of trustee Knudsen's formatting and thinking out, like, if I, if I could spend some time with that, like, you know, that could, that could work, you know, but, yeah. Everything that's here seems to be in support of what we've been doing.
Trustee Lynch?
At the risk of moving us ahead too quickly, I'm just wondering if, if we could just do that now, trustee Jerome? I mean, if we, if we like trustee Ramondo's four, I could see like, putting culture, culture and climate at the top of number one, yeah? Just to see how it lands, not to be, I'm not trying to force anything, I'm just, as a suggestion, as the heading for number one. It could be culture and climate as sort of a heading for number two. It might be academic as a heading for number three. It might be communications as a heading for number four. It might, this is partly why I asked the question, but I think it's around either oversight or financial, I'm not sure.
Fiscal responsibility or fiscal oversight?
Fiscal oversight, great, okay, great. So that would leave us with the facilities heading and the... That would just leave the facilities heading, I think, if I got it right. Right, which is, was it? Right, which is, was an important one about the planning process with our community engagement consultant, and, again, if we want to make that measurable, I don't know if that could be added as is, or if we wanted to change that in any way, but we could just cut and paste the facilities one end, the goal that Trustee Knutson offered, and...
Would, could we...
Add it there.
Could we agree that number four is both fiscal oversight and facilities?
I would probably break them out.
And now that I read it, I would say my, the facilities one in mine is more of a communications, honestly. I, we have a facilities committee, facilities is so tied in with, you know, money and communication, and it's, it's all one big pile this year, so we probably don't need a separate facilities heading, honestly, this year.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, for the fiscal oversight for number four, in my head, when I was writing it, I was thinking, we utilize our building condition survey, we utilize space, space management, so we could add more details in there of what we're using, but when I stated around well-planned, future-focused, and optimal learning environment, when I think of that, I think of a building condition survey that's telling us what the top priorities are to have our buildings running optimally, so in my head, that's what I meant in there, so I, thank you, it took me a while to remember what I was writing about, but, so we could add a little more into that if you want to, so it covers fiscal oversight and facilities, but, there you go.
Trustee Knutson?
Forgive me, Trustee Megan, I do think that the number three, the communications piece, could be written a little better. When I get to allowing the district to structure a multi-year approach, it sounds a little bureaucrat speak to me, it doesn't, it sounds like, if I'm, I'm, again, taking the, the viewpoint of a parent or an incoming parent who is looking for something they can grab onto, it just sounds a little technical.
I can, can I respond to that? That's direct, that line is directly from the communications plan that we were given by BOCs, so there, that's why it's bureaucratic, it's not my words in that one.
Trustee Jerome?
I mean, I like where this is going, I think that, I would still say that I need to have a round two to, like, really look at it, but this is, this is, Trustee Lynch, thank you, that, that was really...
No, this is, this is good progress. As I recall, the previous years that I've been on the board, this is exactly what the process is, and we, you know, kind of bounce back and forth until, until we land on something and that we, that we can really agree on, and then we just improve on it, you know, before we actually call it our goal or goals. Trustee Jerome?
I also think that if we do agree on this format, that in the future, it might make this task a lot simpler.
I think you're on to something. Trustee Goodrich?
I'm just trying to figure out how we're gonna proceed here. I mean, we have a lot of good information in this current document. Do we want to create, you know, kind of archive this one and then create another board doc so we can kind of use it to, to try to come up with, you know, different formats or merging of all the ideas here?
I'd like to hear what Trustee Lynch was about to say, and then I'll, I'll make a comment.
Yeah, I was just reviewing all of, almost all of us put something about the communications plan, so I was just looking to see if there was another version of it that might be less bureaucratic, to use your words, Trustee Knutson, but I just was gonna offer the Trustee Bishop's version of number three. It's, it's pretty specific, which of course I always like, but, but it talks about both the long-term communications plan and the specific sort of tactical things that we want to prioritize, including the board briefs and et cetera, so I just wondered if that was a, a cut and paste that might work.
So use my number three instead of Megan's, okay? Everybody okay with that?
So, how are we gonna proceed on this document? Are we gonna modify this one, or do we want to somehow archive this one in someplace? Or how are we gonna do this?
I don't know if we have to archive it, I'm, I'm thinking that maybe Amanda can pull out Megan's one, two, four, insert my three, use today's date as, you know, as the kind of heading for it, it'll be at the bottom of the document, so it'll be like, under your, your proposed goals, and then we can, we can work on, everybody has access to work on anything on that document, you can work on other people's writing, so, Trustee Jerome? Yeah, no, I just, I just, I think that with the Google Doc, we can, and if, if we want to, we can assign colors to ourselves, so we know who's writing on it, you know, you can change the color of the font, just so we know who's doing what. Trustee Jerome?
So I'm excited to go back and look at this, these some more. One other note, aside from the formatting on Trustee Knutson's version, is I feel that it's really speaking to a specific audience, like, really sees the audience in front of him and is talking to them, and some of the other, the language we were talking about, I would just encourage everybody to really think about, like, that language that would just be simple and accessible and easy, no matter your background, no matter your level of interest, no matter, you know, if your, English is your first language, what is the simplest way to communicate what we're doing here and what our goals are in the district? Remember who we're writing it for.
I agree. Trustee Knutson?
Yeah, and just to build on that, so I think what, what you're saying, and I think is correct, is that in order to be successful at these goals, the way we articulate them to the community and how clear they are and accessible and sort of drawing in the articulation is, will affect how successful we are, because we're not going to be successful in these goals if we cannot engage the community, right? So, that's, that's what it's all about.
Right, thank you. Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, to that end, and we can wordsmith it, but I guess, one thing I just wanted to preview is that I, I do think I want to make the point that our long-term plan has to be something that can be distributed, which is my number two. There's disagreement maybe or question in the community, I know, about like, do we have a long-term plan, what is it? And so, I think it can be part, it is, I know, actually, in our long-term plan, that we have all of these different tactics on how to communicate better with different stakeholders, so it's already there, but I'm just thinking we need to be, to Trustee Knutson's point, really explicit that that is our intention, that it is an actual plan that everybody can access and understand the why, why we're doing this.
I just wanted to say, like, the last sentence of my number two, oh, I think that's just one huge run-on sentence, actually, honestly, "The Board of Education will support and participate in the visioning and planning process with our community consultant, engineers, architects, financial advisors, community partners, and administration to the degree appropriate as we continue to develop, publish, and implement our long-term plan." So maybe we can, I don't know where that goes, but the develop, publish, and implement piece is, I think, what you're looking for.
Yep, absolutely, and I, and maybe what I can do or I can take responsibility for is to think about how it's worded in the communications plan, and maybe we just make it explicit as part of the communications heading. If it's not appropriate, I won't obviously force it, we can add another heading, certainly, and make sure that it's there, but under, you know, maybe potentially under the oversight section, or, or it's its own standalone section, but I just wanted to make sure I didn't lose that.
That's great, I mean, are you offering to...
Yes.
To work on that part? Okay, good.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
So basically, just to summarize, I'm taking your number two and my number two...
Okay.
And looking to see if...
Okay.
We can actually make it part of the communications heading, or if it needs its standalone...
Okay.
Piece.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments, insights? Trustee Goodrich?
I hate to be so specific here, but, right now, I've got, right after school, there's like, at least 12 kids riding up and down my block on their, learning how to ride bicycles, they're all preschool, and I, and I know from talking to the parents, they don't have enough time to get really involved in the board stuff, and I also know, they do not know why we're doing the centralized campus, they have, they just don't understand it, and so we, we need to do a better job communicating with them why we're doing that. I know the frequently asked questions has like, I don't know, 14 different bullets, but we, we need to do a better job there, and it's gotta be part of the goals, they just don't, they don't get it, right? And I, and I understand why they don't get it, and it's, but we have to be better at communicating why it's important.
I'm not sure if that goes into our goal, or if it's just an overarching, you know, kind of charge for us as we move forward. Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, it's an overarching charge, and I, but I just want to make sure you take that in consideration when we're writing our goals, that's all that was about.
So, how are we feeling? Are we feeling like we can work through the Google Doc, refine these four or possibly five statements that will become our goals? I do feel like they also reflect, you know, that, that the superintendent's goals and our goals are reflecting on each other, which I think is good, and because of that, I don't think there, I don't think there's gonna be any surprises in, in our goals that would derail anything that, that she's working on right now, because she's working hard on a lot of these things, so, do we feel like we can come back in November and seal the deal, or do we feel like we need to add a meeting? Trustee Lynch?
I just wanted to ask a question of, I think both Trustee Knutson and Trustee Jerome were, were excited about that idea of the mission/vision, I'm just wondering, would it be satisfactory to put the existing vision and mission above our goals, or did we artificially truncate that discussion? Because that was, that was just a recommendation, but I wanted to make sure that you responded to it.
No, absolutely, I mean, yes, absolutely fine to keep the current mission with me, really, I just, maybe I misunderstood the assignment, but I just really thought, really expansively, just as a thought exercise, it wasn't that I was looking to change the mission, the mission statement tonight.
And I don't think there's anything wrong with putting the mission and the vision statements on, like, if, if we were making a document out of our goals, you know, that it would be fine, it would be great to have the mission, the vision, and then the goals, and, you know, and, like Trustee Jerome said, using language that everyone understands, and, and also, like Trustee Goodrich said, as specific as we can, so that people understand where, you know, where and why we're doing what we're doing. Trustee Goodrich?
So, you asked, should we add another meeting? I, I won't be here on November 12th, so, so I, I'm asking to attend remotely, but if, my preference is to add another meeting, maybe on Tuesday, October 22nd, I don't know if that's possible.
We're not, we're not here that day, because we're at the NISBA convention, so a number, and a number of us will not be here till, I guess, till that evening.
Sorry, I was just gonna mention, that's also our district E&amp;L parent night.
Let's, if, if we're going to look for a, a special meeting date and time, let's do that on email, let's let Amanda poll the board, and, you know, we'll, and we'll find a, a date and time if we want to do that. So you're, you're saying that you would prefer to be in person for that discussion and not virtual?
I mean, I could do it virtual, but I guess your question is, do, do we need another meeting if you want it done sooner?
Right.
So that's, that's probably the more important question.
So, I propose that we take a week to work on the goal in the Google document and see where we go with it, and, you know, we can, we can, like I said, we can all work on it, or we can leave it to a, a few people, you know, we'll see what happens, and if we feel like we need to have a meeting, maybe, actually, maybe we can poll the board sooner rather than later, and maybe hold a date or two for a couple of hours, and then, you know, if we have to meet, we'll meet, and if we don't have to meet, it might just be that the, the new and improved goal is on the agenda, and it's a matter of reading it aloud and, you know, and voting on it. Okay? All right, so we'll poll the board, get a couple times and dates, work on the goal in the Google Doc, and then, like, in a week or so, we'll reassess, see how we feel, okay? All right, thank you, everybody. Great, great work, great conversation. We get to take a break. May we take a five-minute break? Everybody okay with that? Okay, we'll be back in, let's say 10 minutes, we'll be back in 10 minutes. Okay, we'll be back in, let's say 10 minutes, we'll be back in 10 minutes. We are back from our break, and we are moving on to item 14.01, approving the consent agenda. The Board of, the Board of Education hereby approves items number 14.02 through 14.01. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Mitchell Morrell. Any questions or comments? Schedule U?
Yeah, I reviewed Schedule U, and everything was appropriate and approved.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll vote. Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Okay, great, that's unanimous. On to policies, 15.01, this is a first reading of policy 7614, which is preschool, special education, and is this the policy that, so this policy, we did take a quick look at it in the, on the policy committee meeting yesterday, and NISBA's recommendations were also reviewed by our Assistant Superintendent for Pupil Personnel Services, and she, I think, changed two words in the entire policy. So, I would recommend that we skip the second reading of this policy. Trustee Ramondo and Superintendent McLaren and I did read the policy yesterday. It, it's just a formality, if you, if you, you know, this is something that we frequently do with policies, especially when there's only one or two words that need to be changed. And if we don't have to do that, we can certainly leave it on the agenda for the next meeting, and everybody would have an opportunity to read it at that time. Or we can vote on it tonight. Shall we do a consensus vote on whether or not we should vote? If you, if you agree that we could vote on it tonight, please raise your hand. Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote on that. Do we have to do anything special with the wording on this?
When you motion, you just have to say, "Motion to waive first reading, and the Board of Education hereby adopts policy 7614." That's it.
Okay, is it waive second reading, though, right?
Wa, oh, yep, yep. My apologies, yep, thank you.
Okay, great. So, the Board of Education agrees to waive second reading on policy 7614, preschool, special education. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Goodrich? And we'll vote on that one. Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Okay, great, that's unanimous, thank you. Policy, I'm sorry, this is second reading of, and adoption of policy 4212, organizational chart. The Board of Education hereby adopts policy 4212 as written. May I have a first? Trustee Jerome? I'm sorry, I saw you, okay, trustee, actually, Trustee Lynch was a first, Trustee Jerome, second. Any questions or comments? Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Okay, great, that's unanimous. 1503, second reading and adoption of policy 6112, the rights of employees to express breast milk in the workplace. The Board of Education hereby adopts policy 6112 as written. May I have a first? Trustee Lynch, second. Trustee Jerome. Any questions or comments? Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. 1504, second reading and adoption of policy 7611.1, public report on visions, I'm, I'm sorry, public report on revisions to district policies, practices, and procedures upon a finding of significant disproportionality. The Board of Education hereby adopts policy 7611.1 as written. May I have a first? Trustee Jerome, second. Trustee Ramondo? Any questions, comments? We'll vote. Trustee, Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. 15.06, second reading and adoption of policy 7611.2, special education personnel. The Board of Education hereby adopts policy 7611.2 as written. May I have a first? Trustee Mitchell Morrell, second. Trustee Ramondo. Any questions? Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Few more policies. Six, 15.06, second reading and adoption of policy 7611.3, programs and services for parentally placed, non-public school students with disabilities. The Board of Education hereby adopts policy 7611.3 as written. May I have a first? Trustee Ramondo, second. Trustee Goodrich. Any questions? We'll vote. Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Thank you, that's unanimous. And 1507, second reading and adoption of policy 7617, declassification of students with disabilities. The Board of Education hereby adopts policy 7617 as written. May I have a first? Trustee Lynch, second. Trustee Jerome. Any comments, questions? We'll vote. Trustee Knutson?
Aye.
Trustee Jerome?
Aye.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Aye.
Trustee Goodrich?
Aye.
Trustee Lynch?
Aye.
And Trustee Ramondo?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Good work, policy committee. Okay, on to committee reports. 1601 is audit committee, any, or, actually, let's not go through the list, let's just ask which committees have met, and if there are any reports. Trustee Jerome?
Where shall I start? Communications Committee, we met, and we outlined topics for the board briefs with Holly, our BOSI's consultant, and we also started asking questions around our outreach tech stack, and if we were able to track, how to track deliverability and opens, you know, within the different tools that we're using, and really understanding the different tools they're using, their different functions, so that these questions were around this end goal of like, being able to make sure we're reaching people, basically, in the district, in this, in our, in our initiative to have better communication and more transparency, not only internally how we're doing, but externally, are, are our messages to, to, to Trustee Goodrich's point, are, are they being received? I could also do meat eating, or, well, I'll let, Trustee Ramondo do eat, meet and greet? Oh, or?
Sure, it's not a board committee, but we can report on that. It's important information.
Oh, it was health and wellness, is what?
Health and wellness, right.
The health and wellness, yeah, okay.
But, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Sure.
We also met health and wellness, we had a very lively conversation with people who led the, the event in past years, and really tied in how we can tie it to health and wellness, getting the community engaged, different ideas for what the topics would be. I won't, since we just spoke about it this afternoon, I won't mention those yet, but it looks like it's gonna be a bang-up event this year, so it was a really good conversation.
Thank you. Any, would you like to add anything to that?
I'll just add that, you know, we're trying to be very proactive and get started now, so I think that will be advantageous to us this year, and we're just working on spreading the word. Should I, Amanda, should I say our potential date, or no? Oh, let's wait till Victoria knows, and then we'll, then we'll talk about it, but get excited, people, it's gonna be amazing, and it's probably gonna be in April. Okay, that's it.
Okay, great. Any other committee, any other committees meet? I think we've had some reports at our last meeting from I think we've had some reports at our last meeting from the other committees. Okay, any old business? Any new business? Any requests for information? Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
I'm not sure if this is the right category, but I guess I have a general question about why we don't have Spanish in elementary school or a language, like with the Global Citizen Talk, and also in the name of recruitment, I just feel like people want that. Is it financial? Have we just not ever done it, so we're not doing it now? Just curious about that.
Was that all about Spanish in elementary school? Okay, all right, I just, I thought there were two topics, but, okay, great, great, thank you. Any other requests for information? Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, yeah, I just wanted to reiterate my RFI from the last meeting, wondering if there's any criteria or process in place for how we include the sixth grade and the middle school and our high school. We had a great report today, I'm so glad it's going so well, but, you know, there's been decisions about what bathrooms kids use, what activities they go to, different things, and we're just wondering in terms of the, our implementation of this new configuration, if there's any criteria about how we're making some of those decisions that we could share.
So I, I'm not aware of opportunities that the sixth graders are not being given that are middle school-wide except for the tailgate situation, which happened at homecoming. And that decision was made based on our ability to provide appropriate supervision for those sixth graders who would be staying after school and presumably taking a late bus, but we don't really have the, the ability to enforce that, that they get on a bus as opposed to just stay and continue on and watch some of the home games. So because this was so new to us and we're still getting them integrated, and we were very concerned with a lack of supervision on that, at that event, that that decision was made at that time, but they are absolutely, fully welcome to participate in middle school clubs and in the intramurals and all of the other offerings. They go to all the bathrooms that all the middle schoolers go to. Was there another example of something that?
That's great. No, and it wasn't meant to be about specifically, it was just whether there was a policy or criteria in place that we're utilizing as part of the implementation of this, adding a new grade, I recognize. And I think that one in particular did come at a surprise, but that's not meant to be, that's not for the board to discuss. That was an administration or, you know, an implementation, but I'm just thinking about broader as we're looking at reconfigurations of schools and different age groups and different things. How are we, what criterias we're using, or is it more of a sort of an iterative process?
It is, and I think as we come up with different scenarios, because every year we do different events and try and offer new things, we will certainly consider that, but my understanding at this point is that all middle school offerings are offered for sixth through eighth grade.
Any other RFIs? Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, so looking at the enrollment summary here for September, I think back in July, we were talking about kindergarten enrollment size around 64 or so, and now I see it's 72. Was there, I was just wondering if you have any, you know, why, why did, we could see the bump, was that unexpected, or how'd that, why did that happen?
I could look back at our enrollment projection, I believe that it's in line with the projection. We were seeing a lower actual registration over the summer, so we weren't sure that everyone that we had projected was going to actually enroll. But as you know from that presentation that Assistant Superintendent Leclerc gave, I think about a year and a half ago, our enrollment numbers may change by a little, but there's actually a huge churn sometimes beneath the surface of people leaving and entering, so.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
More of a fun fact, but I've actually heard a lot of the time kindergarten registration is late because kids mature a lot over the summer and they think like, oh, maybe we won't do it next year, and then they're like, by August 15th, they're like, actually, this kid is ready.
Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, I was just, I just wanted to clarify on those numbers, there, there's, for example, on any of the totals, there, there's a number in parentheses. Is that the difference from the year before? I don't know if you can see that. Do you see what I'm?
That's actually not a public document that you're looking at?
So the, the document that we receive has confidential information on it?
No, great, I'm just asking, is the, is it, in the parentheses, is that the difference?
No.
And that the answer was no. Yes, thank you.
Right. Any other requests for information? All right. Sorry. Our next scheduled meeting is November 12th, 2024, at the Woodstock Elementary School. May I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Mitchell Morrell, second. Trustee Ramondo, all in favor? Thank you, everyone, that's unanimous.